Because you're very big outside this piece of. I got here.
Hey Nancy.
Hey Mike.
I'm gonna turn you up here a little bit. Did you have a good week so far?
It has been a whirlwind, let's put it that way.
I'm gonna go close a couple blinds here.
Yeah.
Glare off my head's a little bright. So kind of a whirlwind, how is that because we're starting to open up things a little bit? Everybody's trying to get things out?
No. Expanded the grant program for businesses, so I'm getting inundated with all of those applications. We're creating an application for outdoor seating expedited for restaurants and bars. And so trying to get everything all done to meet deadlines.
Nice. Well, that's good. At least it's a full employment act.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's, that's a good thing. I should put my gun away.
Oh, dear goodness, yes.
Yeah. You didn't see.
I actually didn't because I'm typing as we're doing this.
That's good. Yeah, I don't think it's in good form to have a gun sitting behind me. You know, it's, it's just a little annoying, but yeah, probably not a good thing. Probably somebody looked at it and took offense, you know?
Okay, so how about your last couple of weeks?
You know, it's, it's been pretty good. Business has been good.
Good.
You know, I can't complain and it's been, you know, money's coming in and we got, with the exception of one client, everybody else is up to where they were pre.
Wow.
Yeah, so they're all whole.
That's great.
Making money, but it's a little taxing on the old brain.
Guess I should have my video on.
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, see, I, I learned something. I have, I need to upgrade. So I have a iMac on my desk and then I got a MacBook Pro that I use typically. And it just dawned on me, my MacBook Pro is like nine years old.
Oh, wow. Okay. Hi, Michelle. Can't see you. I see a wall or something.
I, I think it's coming. I said to join with video, but maybe I messed that up, but I'll.
Oops, why is Wade muted? Do you want to be muted, Wade?
There, how about now?
Okay, there you are. Good.
Okay, you actually sound much better, Wade.
No. You can hear me?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Forgot to take the piece of paper over my camera off. That's why you can't see me. There you go. Here I am.
Howdy, oh, good name.
A little piece of paper.
There you go. You understand, everybody can still track you like via your cellphone, even if you have it off. It's true. Just saying. Good evening, Carl.
I hate to on this phone. I wish I had a decent thing.
Good evening, Neil.
Evening.
Looks like you're outside in the wind.
Yeah, there's a little bit of wind out here. I just I'm trying to get outside even a few feet whenever I can, so. It's amazing all the things you find, find out to do around the house when you spend a a rather different percentage of your time there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So have you taken up woodworking?
I'm sorry?
Have you taken up woodworking or anything, you know?
Uh, no. No woodworking, no whittling, no, no mask making for me.
All right, well, you know, it's.
But I'll keep that, I'll put that on the list.
Yeah.
Wait, wait down at the bottom, but it sounds relaxing. How about you?
Um, no, I actually, I went to a craft show one time. There were blue ducks and I've never gone back.
It's just, it's just, it's just for you.
Yeah, I mean, it was like 1986. I think Lori and I had been married for a year. And she said, we should go see this, we should go to this craft show. Having never been to one, I thought, sure, let's go do that. I didn't, I thought I'd died. I mean, wow, this is, this is purgatory, man. I'm done. But fortunately, we made our way out of that after what seemed to be an eternity and I'm still here today, so this is good.
Are you getting out on your motorcycle? In these days of, I mean, you could probably drive 500 miles on a tank of gas, I would imagine, if this.
Oh, yeah. You know, actually, actually, my son, one of them, he had his little rock crawler. I came home one day and it was in my garage with the front wheels off and all the, the front end all torn apart. So that was fun. So and, and in the third stall garage, they actually built their own gymnasium. So I couldn't even get to my motorcycle. I was like, really, guys? You know, are you kidding me? No, but I can get to it now. So, yeah, that's good. Ah, we've got a whole bunch more. Sean's with us. John's with us. Diane's with us. This is like romper room from days gone by, you know?
Are you, are you gonna sing the song for us?
Uh, no, no, you'll be very thankful I'm not going to.
Oh, I, I already am.
Okay, well, go ahead.
There you go.
Hello, Kate. Hello, Kate.
Hello. I didn't realize I was on mute.
That's okay. You're back on mute now.
Yeah, don't, don't get, don't get crazy with power, mute people.
Well, Nancy, you'll have to tell me when we have everybody we think we're gonna have. Nancy, you're muted.
That doesn't help. Jenny, Jenny, is Maria Sabata joining us? I don't see her.
I believe she is, yes.
Okay. We've got a few more minutes.
Okay.
If you want to start, actually, I think the DDA is first, so I'll watch more.
Okay, sounds good. So we certainly have a quorum so we can get started, so. All right, excellent. So with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We're holding this meeting via Zoom. We understand that this is perfectly legal. Should anybody in the public have a particular question regarding any specifics thereof, they can contact City's Eagle staff tomorrow or at any point in the future. We are recording this for posterity and I'm sure it'll be just a wonderful riveting meeting tonight. And I'm looking forward to hopefully this all clearing up and in the very near future, we can all meet in person. So with that, we'll call this meeting to order and the next item on the agenda is to call the roll.
Kate Townley?
Here.
Daryl Kinton?
Yeah.
Michelle Austin?
Here.
Judy Brown? Don't see her yet. Kate Fuller?
Here.
Diane Lepowski?
Here.
Noel Atkins?
Here.
Carl Adams?
Here.
And Pierre Freemire?
Here. We do have a quorum. We do expect a few more as, as time goes on and running just a little bit late. But item number three on the agenda is the approval of the May 5th, 2020 minutes. Would there be such a motion?
Some of. A second.
We have motion and a second. Would there be any discussion, points clarification, or correction within the minutes as presented? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Townley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kinton?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
I don't believe Ms. Brown has joined us yet. Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Lepowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Atkins?
Yeah.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
And Pierre Freemire?
Yes. Okay, motion, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public forum. I'm not aware of anybody at this meeting from the public, but if anybody is out there, now would be a good time to announce yourself. And you certainly can address the commission for the next three minutes. I see there's somebody on a phone number. I'm not sure who that is.
Probably Dugan.
Ah, hang on.
Cause I.
It's Dugan.
I can't get into the Zoom.
Okay, well, Dugan, it's a pleasure to have you here. Sort of, sort of here, but we're all good. All right, so seeing nobody from the public, certainly they've had the opportunity and certainly they'll have the opportunity to review this in the future. I understand the next item is item number five regarding downtown matters. And let's see, who has that?
So you have Dan Perumba and John Voeberl to address that for the commission.
Excellent. At your convenience, sir.
So thank you. It's nice to be here this evening. John Voeberl and I are here to give you a quick update on the Downtown Matters Initiative. You remember, this is the, the initiative that's taking a look at investigating and hopefully formulating a downtown development authority or DDA for Inglewood. So this update follows up on our February 19th update for you. You may remember one of our key consultants, Hillary Portell, was at that meeting and presented a lot of detail about what we're doing, about what the Downtown Matters consulting team is doing. I may also remember that most of this work is being funded through a Dr. Cog Next Step Grant that we secured last year. So it's really a great opportunity to address a need and have it funded through others. This effort was really kicked off late last year through a collaboration between the city and the Chamber of Commerce. And as we reiterated for the chamber board this morning, the plan would be that this would be a continuing collaborative or partnership-like effort between the DDA, if it is formed, the city and the chamber. So tonight's really just a quick progress update and to facilitate that, we sent you all, it's attached to the agenda as well, a copy of the study session update for council, just several weeks old now. That was provided on April 27th, 2020, obviously. So our lives have been obviously very, very impacted. So, uh, our lives have been obviously very, very impacted, uh, in the three months now since we provided our last uh, update to you all. And one of the things ironically we're seeing is that cities are using downtown development authorities and other special districts really as key recovery tools as they, uh, position to move forward post, uh, COVID. And I think that's something that we're really building into our plan for Inglewood as well. We've pivoted in a, in a major way to address that, and that'll become a, a key part of the, uh, downtown plan of development, which will become the business plan for the DDA. Um, I'll just give you one quick example. It was the work of the, um, of the downtown, downtown matters consulting team that identified the need, uh, talking to downtown restaurants to get, um, more outdoor space available to them as a key element to opening early. We shared that internally with other key members at the city. Um, the city manager and, uh, Darren Hollingsworth, they've moved forward with a team of people and are really well positioned to identify a strategy, uh, that gets our downtown restaurants access to uh, outdoor space to give them a real viable chance at operating early, uh, on a profitable basis. Um, so long story short, even with COVID, uh, the decision has been made to stay the course, take advantage of the Dr. Cog funding, um, take advantage of the need, if you will, that we have now for this important tool, and really head towards an election, a DDA formation election in November of this year. Uh, by way of background, many, many, uh, city planning studies, recent planning studies, uh, all unanimously came to the recommendation, uh, that, uh, Inglewood needs a DDA. Uh, and then two independent studies conducted by the Urban Land Institute also came to the same, uh, recommendation. As we've talked about before, you know, what we see in Inglewood, many, many great things to work with, great pieces of the puzzle, but we have absolutely no platform, no vehicle to create a brand for our downtown, market our downtown, promote public events in our public areas, uh, raise funding through taxes, and, uh, really prioritize needed public improvements. So we are relative to our sister cities, uh, at a great disadvantage. And so this effort is really uh, to kind of, uh, plug the gap, if you will, and give us a tool to step into a modern competitive world. Uh, one of the things we've talked about before is that our downtown area or central business district is composed of three sub areas that have historically, even though they've been next to each other, um, operated essentially as their own little islands. And so we've missed an opportunity as a downtown area to really create synergy and economies of scale. And, and the three areas are, of course, the historic, uh, stretch, downtown stretch of South Broadway, which has been our identified downtown. And then, of course, the adjacent citizen area as well as the adjacent, uh, medical district. So this is, uh, one of the things that we think the DDA can quickly, uh, rectify. Uh, we also think that the DDA can be a really helpful mechanism to draw the hospitals and other large employers and property owners into collaboration with the city to really partner with the city on community, uh, building. That's something that's been absent in the past. Uh, so we're hoping that the DDA, uh, can be a mechanism to help us address that. Since, uh, meeting with you in February, the process, the investigation process has continued. The Next Step Study Team has really, uh, managed that. There's an extensive online, um, webpage with tons of information. There was an extensive public survey that was conducted, lots of email updates and coordinating other outreach to the public. Um, that survey alone generated three hundred eighteen fairly detailed responses from members of the public that really addressed all kinds of, uh, ideas for how downtown can be improved. Um, and then the, um, this team, the consulting team has, has recently taken on the drafting of what's called the Downtown Plan of Development. That's really a bit of a misnomer because it's a focus on many, many operational matters, not just development. But the downtown plan, as I mentioned, will become the business plan for the DDA, assuming there's a successful election. Um, recently, recent events have also included, uh, a second steering committee meeting, um, that was conducted online, of course, on April twenty-eighth. We have, um, the steering committee meeting taking place regularly now. We have about twenty-five members on the steering committee, and they represent pretty equally the three sub areas that I mentioned. Um, the survey and the steering committee, uh, have provided a lot of input from Inglewood citizens. Um, that is now helping to drive the downtown plan of development. Um, that plan will be further reviewed with the steering committee and, um, with inputs from the public as well. Um, there is a public forum that's going to be conducted online later this week, a Zoom webinar, uh, Thursday evening at five thirty P M. Excuse me, uh, the draft plan, um, will be also posted on the, on the webpage.
Uh-oh, he's frozen.
Brad, can you pick up where, um, Dan left off perhaps? Sorry, this is Sean Lewis. Um, Brad, are you, looks like you're on the call. Yeah. You may want to go on to the next item. I'm not sure exactly. Or maybe I have questions if you have them.
Yeah, I guess at this point, um, John, would you have, um, any insights and be able to pick up where, uh, where Dan left off?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Where the fuck am I?
John, can you hear me?
I'm kind of lost here.
Okay, it looked like in the memo, I would go down to probably the analysis section, which is a quarter of the way through the second to last page on the writing.
Damn.
Well, worse things have happened at sea, so everybody take a deep breath. It's just technology.
Okay, where, where did you say?
I say worse things have happened at sea, John, so just take a deep breath and if you can pick up, if not, we'll just.
Where do you want me to pick up in the memo?
Uh, it, it seems to be the, in the, the opening four or five pages, the second to last page. Um, he was just about down to analysis. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, he was talking about, yes, he was talking about the twenty-five commercial property owners that are are now on the, uh, steering committee, and they are kind of evenly distributed between the three different sub areas. Um, and then terms of analysis, as required by the DDA statute, an Inglewood ordinance to call an election to create the DADA will require council review and approval in accordance with the scheduled outline. Uh, the election will take place, would take place in November of two thousand twenty. Uh, the schedule will be basically, city council, we expect first reading, um, to be on June fifteenth, and then we would have a, a city council public hearing. Uh, it's not required, but we, we kind of suspect the city council will want to do that. And so that'll be on July sixth, and then the second reading will be on July twentieth. And those are pretty hard and fast dates because we need to, uh, meet deadlines for an election, uh, to get to the county, uh, uh, the county, um, what, the county clerk, I guess, is who runs the elections. Um.
If I could jump, I'm sorry, John, if I could chair, jump in here for a minute. Mr. Perumba is back, and Director Power is, keeps continually getting dropped. So even though he shows he's in the meeting, he, he drops in and out with his internet connection, so uh, that's why he was unable to respond, so.
Hey, Dan, are you, Dan, are you there? Yes, I'm here. I'm here. All right, uh, I took them through the Inglewood DDA formation ordinance schedule. Uh, would you like to pick up from there? Yes, I will. Thank you very much. My apologies about that. You know, some days are just like that on this Zoom, so uh, we'll see if we can get through the end here. Um, the Inglewood, uh, election, because it's a small election that just involves the qualified electors and the, in the DDA boundary area, will, uh, be sponsored by the city, uh, with all election tasks actually expected to be managed by the law firm Spencer Fane, uh, with support from Portel Works and Puma. Um, the qualified electors are mainly the DDA area business owners and property owners. And the election, as we talked about a little bit last time, is based on a simple majority. Owners of multiple properties get one vote. Um, the, um, let me go a little bit into the financial tools of the DDA. Um, both, both tools that the DDA has to work with will be authorized in the formation election. However, the specific implementation steps will then require, uh, subsequent action by city council um, in approving the downtown plan of development, again, assuming there's a successful election in November. The two tools are a property mill levy of up to five mills. Uh, we're expecting, because of where we are in the economy, that the initial um, request or recommendation will be for two mills. And generally, that'll be an add-on in terms of property taxes uh, in the area of three percent plus or minus. In addition, um, qualified electors will be asked for the, uh, authorization to use incremental property and sales taxes generated over a base year. Um, and we're still looking at that with our financial folks in terms of the timing of that ask. We're in an uncertain period right now, so that could occur early, that could occur, uh, excuse me, a year later. But in any event, uh, the DDA does have the authority, uh, again, subject to public vote and council approval, to use incremental tax revenues. Um, as John was mentioning, if the DDA is successful, council will then install the DDA board. It'll be most likely a board of about seven members, six, uh, business or property owners, most likely they will come from the steering committee, and one city council member. Once the board is installed, which could be late this year or early next, they would then finalize and approve the downtown plan of development, which would then come to planning and zoning for their review and input, and ultimately a recommendation to council. Council would then review it, they would, uh, hold a public hearing, and finally, uh, come to a public vote, or I should say a council vote, on the downtown plan. And, uh, with that, you know, I might turn it back to John, and I don't know, John, if you were able to address kind of the process of how the DDA, um, boundaries are being defined as this process continues? Uh, yes, uh, I believe there was a map in, in the, uh, packet, uh, that shows the boundaries that we started with. We, we actually started with our boundaries that are defined, there are comprehensive plan um, for the city center downtown area as well as the medical district. And, uh, then we, uh, we then selected out all the commercially zoned properties, and we're leaving out the residentially zoned properties. Uh, this may include some apartment buildings, and, and there may be a few single-family houses near the medical district that are included, uh, but we're trying to avoid that as much as possible. Uh, and we're still kind of in the process of getting the final boundaries, uh, figured out here. I think Dan and I are going to do, end up being able to do that here in this week or next week. And I would, I would just, uh, conclude by saying that we have a really impressive team, um, that's working hand in hand with the city and the chamber, again, courtesy of this Dr. Cog grant. And, uh, they're moving through the process, um, really well. I think we're really happy with the amount of public input and public involvement we have, and, and, uh, coming out of that, I think you'll see a bit later in the summer, a really nice draft document that identifies the various ways that downtown can really be improved to make it much more of a people, a people place that invites customers and visitors, and, uh, really supports our downtown businesses as well as our property owners. With that, happy to, uh, address with John any questions.
Excellent. Any questions from commissioners? Dara? Kate, why don't we go to you? Okay, Kate.
There we go. Okay. Um, Dan, I think you kind of addressed this, but I guess one of the things with timing right now and with our unique, um, laws in Colorado around Gallagher Amendment and things like that, that there's that potential, or it looks like in terms of forecasts, that our commercial and our residential property rates will go down, um, possibly by even twenty percent. So it sounds like that wouldn't impact the mill, but it could impact what your increment would be on the TIF. But if I heard you correctly, then the TIF isn't triggered immediately. That would be a later action. So you may be able to wait till you get to the bottom, or the forecasted bottom then before you would put the TIF in place, so you'd have more of an increment.
Yeah, good que, good question, Kate. Um, there's a bunch of variables that go into it. Um, the mill levy is fairly straight, straightforward because you, we collectively want to see the DDA start collecting some fees to start implementing some immediate, you know, improvements, uh, more on the operation side of things. The TIF, we have a good team that's working on that, trying to figure out what the ideal scenario is. Uh, I don't think they know all the answers yet. Um, you know, there's a lag on the property assessed values. That goes into, you know, the determination of the base year strategy. Um, one of the other things the team is looking at, and I think it could be beneficial, is taking each of those three sub areas and kind of creating uh, sub areas under the downtown plan of development, which would then, um, allow more flexibility in terms of the way TIF is collected and applied. And so we'll come back to you with the details on that. And I think the important thing is just as you said, um, that the specific um, strategy and decisions about TIF will come later in the process, particularly after the election, and as the downtown plan of development is finalized for consideration by the commission and by the city council.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Any other questions? Concerned statements? Yes, Michelle?
I raised my hand electronically, but it didn't work. You didn't see it. Oh, well.
See everybody at the same time.
Um, you mentioned the, there was a webinar coming up this Thursday at five. And is that, I mean, can we just listen to that?
Sure. The, uh, the, you can go to the city website. There's a, a full page set up for downtown matters with, uh, a good number of links. And there'll be a link there to the Zoom, uh, meeting for the web. be a link there to the Zoom meeting for the webinar, which starts actually at 5:30 on Thursday.
Is there any expiration date on that $200,000 grant?
John, John is the grantmaster, so I'll let him answer that.
I believe that it expires at the end of 2021, so it's quite a, we, we got a pretty early start, so we're not really in date.
Okay. And then, just for clarification, for my own sake, you said that the election is sponsored by the city, which is great, and it's a simple majority, so each property owner only gets one vote, even if they have multiple properties, or did I misunderstand that?
No, that's correct.
So if you own five properties, you get one vote?
Yes.
Oh, very interesting, okay.
As, as long as they're entitled with the same entity. You know, you could have five properties, if you had five different ownership entities and legal, you know, legally established and licensed entities, then you would get five separate votes.
So if you had, if you had like several LLCs or something, what you're common, okay.
And so, for example, in our, in our considerations with Swedish Medical Center, they have, you know, somewhere around 35 different properties. And so far, our research indicates that they're all licensed in probably two, just two entities.
Wow, well, that's very interesting politically.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Next, I'd like to go to Darryl.
I think I'm, oh, I'm on now. I was just wondering, you know, in terms of, you know, the, any, can you talk about like any negative pushback you've got in terms of, you know, how this is different? You know, people saying, well, you know, we had this before, not really understanding the difference between this, you know, the previous thing that, I forget what it's called, that preceded it. I mean, has that been an issue at all, or are people pretty positive?
I would say surprisingly not. I mean, surprisingly, surprisingly little negativity. I mean, there just seems to be an inherent understanding that downtown, to make it successful, we need something like this. We have obviously a new, a new generation of business and property owners, so they seem to be pretty excited about it. And there's a pretty solid reasons about why the DDA in its, you know, prior iteration wasn't successful. So I, I would say we've seen very little negativity and a lot of open-mindedness. And I think we still understand that we have a business case to make in terms of the cost benefit of proving up, you know, this proposition. But we're, we're really happy that the process is unfolding the way it is. You know, I'd also say another, another attribute that we have going in our favor is our, is our new city manager. I mean, Sean, coming from Longmont, where they were, had a very successful DDA, worked very closely with the business community, as well as with the city council. I think he is a good advocate, and having a city manager who understands that the, you know, the intricacies of the DDA and what it can accomplish, as well as Sean does, I'll tell you, that was just, you know, that was fate, hopefully, but it was, I think, really, really positive for the city.
That's good to hear. Can you talk a little bit more about, obviously, how, you know, the existing situation, you know, has been a positive, you know? I mean, I, I also guess I'm curious about too, I know some of the city council people have been talking about outdoor dining and that type of stuff. I mean, is that, you know, I mean, I guess that gets into the specifics of, you know, what, what could be done down the road, but I mean, have people started to talk about those sorts of things, or is that, you know, I guess that's kind of a two-part question?
Oh, I think our, our team, you know, one of the benefits is that our team is working on these types of downtown development authorities, not only across Colorado, but across the country. And so they're seeing a lot of it, they're studying a lot of it, they're watching, in Hillary's case, for example, because she's so involved in the East, East Colfax effort, she's watching what Denver is doing on a daily basis. And so they've provided, I think our team has provided the city team, a lot of early reconnaissance on this restaurant opening, opening, and how to really support the restaurants in what they can do. And I think, I don't know all the details, but the city has a, has a detailed plan that's coming together. I think it's going to be quite impressive and really facilitate early openings and success by allowing use of outdoor areas. I, I would say there's some other, there's some other things where the, the consulting team is providing feedback to the city folks who are working on, you know, opening, reopening. So I, I just think that'll continue to provide a lot of value to the city, and particularly in the situation that we're in right now, actually.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Diane, I'm going to unmute you, and you're next. Trying to unmute you.
I'm on.
You're on.
Am I here? Can you hear me?
Yes, now you're here.
Okay. Thanks for sharing the update, Dan. I just had, I had two questions. One, I guess dovetails on what you just mentioned about the outdoor seating areas. I know in other locations, I've read that that might lead to certain road closures. Is that something that's on the table?
In Inglewood, I think the feeling is that we have enough outdoor spaces that we can actually utilize those to provide the needed outdoor seating. In some cases, they'll be sidewalk areas, paseo areas, even extending into parking areas that may, might have otherwise served the restaurants. So at this point, although there's been discussion about whether street closures could be beneficial, I don't think that that's going to be part of the initial plan, although I really need to reserve that possibility for the balance of the city team as things unfold.
Gotcha, thank you. And then, could you share a little bit maybe of the takeaways or the big themes from the, maybe not only the public survey, but sort of generally the public survey and the steering committee, have any major themes emerged?
Yeah, I would say here's some of the, here's some of the quick summary points that are flowing into the draft executive summary for the downtown plan. One is this idea of, of, and I hit on it already, no brand, no marketing for downtown. So, you know, obviously, the DDA would look at creating a brand, creating a marketing program. That's not just general marketing, but it could be some very tactical marketing. We've talked about the need to fill up some of our downtown vacancies with employers, who actually bring full-time employees with them, who can then help support our merchants and our restaurants. So there could be a sub-plan for attracting employers. I would say one of the big things we've heard is homelessness impacts on perceived safety and cleanliness. And so, you know, one of the things the DDA is going to have to figure out how to do is how to address that in ways that, you know, help the perception issues there. And I think that's going to involve, you know, ideas for better connecting the homeless with some of the services that we have right here and adjacent to our community as well. But that's just a, that's just a reality that we're going to have to face and figure out how to deal with if it's impacting or limiting the number of people who want to come downtown at certain, you know, parts of the day or the evening. I would say, you know, things as simple as what are, what are some low-hanging fruit, you know, that we can implement changes and improvements right away? Like our downtown merchants have talked about their desire to see landscaping in the mediums on Broadway, and also as well on Hampton. And, you know, so is that something that could be a quick win for the DDA to really achieve, you know, a quick improvement through DDA funding that the city may not always be able to do? We've talked about, you know, decorative lighting over and along Broadway, and maintenance of some of the paseo areas in ways that city and the merchants can't do now. So, you know, not only are there some big picture policy issues that the DDA can work with the city and the chamber on, but there's a bunch of little quick wins that can be implemented by the DDA simply because there's, you know, no other entity positioned and in place to do that.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments from commissioners? Any else? Yes, no?
What will be the impact on those residential properties that are within the boundaries?
I would say, and I'll let John comment on this too, our, our general approach, and we're working through this with the attorneys, our general approach is to leave the current multifamily properties out of the boundaries, because they, neither those owners or tenants had the opportunity to really assess the financial impacts of being in a DDA, but to provide more flexibility for future multifamily projects to be in the DDA. Because in that case, both the developer and the tenants would have upfront notices to what the impacts on their rent might be, and they would typically, typically for the average tenant, be very, very small. John, did I say that? Did I say that right?
Yeah, and I would just add that this week I was actually doing some test runs on, we're thinking about initially doing two mills of property tax on, to raise operational funding for the DDA. And I ran some tests on some different residential properties and found that because residential properties are taxed so low here in Colorado, that the impact amounted to like one or $2 per apartment unit per month, which is very low. So I think, I don't, even if we do include some residential properties, the impact is very, going to be very negligible for them.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Just for those that, that may be watching or listening to this at some point in the future, Judy Brown did join the meeting about 30 minutes ago. So if you're just, if you're just catching this on audio, she is here as well. Just wanted to make a note of that. Anything else, any other comments? Hang on.
Thank you, thank you for having us. We appreciate the chance to update the commission. I think you guys are going to be an important piece of this as it continues to unfold over the balance of the year. So we look forward to just these continuing communications with you all. Hopefully, we'll, they'll get back to being in person here in the not-too-distant future.
Yep, I think it's going to be great. Kate, I noticed you had, you had your hand up, so.
I was just going to say, in terms of a comment, just in hearing from other communities around the state, kind of like what, what Dan's been saying, is that having that ability to work together on a lot of these emerging issues, and being able to be nimble and, and figure out things, instead of each business having to figure out everything on their own, being able to have a group to work together and work with the city seems to be really beneficial. So it'll be exciting to see how this all moves forward.
Absolutely. Any other comments, questions, concerns? All right, I just wanted to take a, take a moment to say thank you, we really appreciate this. There's going to be a lot of issues that come up and a lot of questions, so little intestinal fortitude and continue with a great positive attitude, and I'm sure that the things will move forward.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
All right, well, certainly appreciate it. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number six regarding the capital improvement fund. And Wade, I believe you have this item.
Thank you, Chair Freymeyer. I'll just provide a quick introduction here. Following the May 6th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, where you all recommended the capital project list to city council, city council met in study session on the 11th to review and further discuss the projects. And they came back with some changes that they wanted to get your further input on. You have a memo from city manager Louis in your packet tonight that outlined those changes. We also have finance director Maria Sabata and public works director Maria DeAndrea here to explain some of the projects that are changed or being proposed to change. And we would like to get your feedback as to whether you agree with those changes or not. And those, those comments you make tonight will be sent back to the city council for further discussion and debate. But with that, I'll, I'll just see if either city manager Louis or Maria Sabata, I don't want to provide any more additional background into city council's deliberations and what we might be looking for tonight in terms of project changes and so forth.
Thanks, Wade, I think you covered it quite well. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, I, I would just add that we did get kind of a windfall in the fact that we aren't going to need the money that we expected to need for the Broadway and interchange. And so that really allowed, we provide, pull up some additional items, many of which you spoke about at your last meeting, so they really took that into consideration when they pulled some of those items up. And then also just, you know, provide you an opportunity to have a second run with this additional money, what, you know, what can you do with that? There are two projects that Maria will speak to more, that we think are important, because they do have matching funds, and they're, as I said, here, staff memo. And so we would strongly recommend that those be funded, and then would love the recommendations on both those, but also the other items that council asked you to consider, and as well as the ones that you personally would like to see on the list.
Okay, thank you. So who wants to kick, or pardon me, Maria or Maria, would either one of you care to add anything to city manager Louis's comments?
No, I think I will let Maria speak to it.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, I'm just available for any questions. We did talk about that additional $2 million for the Broadway and, and US 285 interchange. So that was not for the funding of the project. The project is funded as of 2020. So that was additional, we had put that in there for additional work up in the northwest quadrant for that little Dry Creek Plaza.
Okay. Still with us? Perhaps not.
So to the, how that project interacts with the interchange, and then as city manager Louis mentioned, then that frees up additional funds that could be allocated to other projects, some of which you prioritized last time.
Okay, thank you. Would there be any discussion from the commissioners? Yes, why don't we go to Michelle first, and then I think Carl is next, is that correct?
Just to, for clarification sake, the first section of these were our original $5 million, well, $4.995 million recommendations, correct? And then the second one, there are things we talked about but didn't necessarily include it, is that correct?
This is Maria Sabata, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And, and if I can mention, the council did express And, and if I can mention, the council did express support for including those.
My favorite, Dartmouth Avenue traffic calming. Okay. And so then the third section is how they, so, so if we add all of these things up, does that, for one, two, three, four sections, does that add up to $5 million?
It, it does. This is Maria Sabata again, and it does because we are removing the $2 million that you originally discussed, and we've added the projects that you had talked about in the memo, but did not, you know, put as part of the $5 million original request, and then in addition, there were a couple of other items that were added. So yes, it does.
Okay. So council wanted us to go back to the original budget of $50,000 for the Emerald Ash Bore?
That's correct.
Okay. That's a very curious thing, because there were $50,000 in the budget this year. So is the budget this year going to be used for that, or do we even need the Emerald Ash Bore in next year's budget?
This is Sean. We don't, the problem is unknown to this. As you may have heard, we just recently were notified that Fort Collins has now had its first infestation, and you typically went.
Hope it doesn't sound drunk and so.
They have to be muted. Usually the infestation, they're already months into that by the time it's discovered. And so I think that there is a real concern among council as well as some of our park staff, that if we don't fund this adequately, that we will have very large unfunded liability that could kind of hit at any time. So I would tend to agree with you, Ms. Austin, that, you know, to some extent, this is an insurance policy, but it appears to be an insurance policy that the council wants to take on.
Oh, I'm, I'm all for starting in on the Emerald Ash Bore mitigation. Denver's already blown through their funds that they had allocated for it. So if, unless they allocate more, we can't count on Denver being any sort of geographical firewall. I, you know, I last name, I just went through the numbers that treat all of the ash trees that are owned by the city would be $71,000, and that probably, we probably don't need to treat all the trees. There's some trees that we just want to let go or remove. So I was just looking for clarification in that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Carl, did I see your hand go up before? Yes, sir?
For clarification on the Broadway and 285, that's going from $2 million to zero and not going to 1.1 million? It's going to zero, it's needed for that for this year?
So I was mistaken. So in 2020, we budgeted and received the full 1.1 million, which is the city's match for that project. For 2021, then I requested an additional $2 million for that Little Dry Creek Plaza to be incorporated into the US 285 and Broadway interchange project. But we're saying we're going to reduce that $2 million, just do some design of how those two areas interact as part of the 285 interchange design. So we're requesting, we're going, the, the project is fully funded for the base project.
All right.
We're requesting just additional design of how those projects interact.
So there was $100,000 pulled out to do the on-ramp onto Hampton from Broadway going west on Hampton. And because that's such a sharp corner, and I don't really see that, I mean, you're going, you're, the speed limit on Broadway is 25 mile an hour, and you can take a pretty sharp corner at 25 miles an hour. So when that's, when that is, when all the plans are done, that's, that could be incorporated in the plan next year, I would, I would imagine, but I'm not, I'm not really understanding that interchange or... Is that $100,000 going to be needed for that on-ramp?
Yeah, so it's the interaction. If you're familiar with that corner, there's a fountain, and then the plaza and the drainage way extends all the way up to that Costa Vida restaurant. So it's looking at how that interacts. There's some potential development on the north side right there, too, near the mushroom building, and so it's incorporating all of that of how, while it, whether or not it would be incorporated or constructed with the interchange project, but it all is so close and tight together that we do want to make sure that it, it works together and it's not disjointed.
I kind of remember the fountain, that's, to fix the pumps on that, it's got like, I don't know, $800,000 or something like that. I don't remember what it was, but it sounds like the fountain area. I mean, that, I like that, but I don't know, I don't know if we need to keep it.
And that's part of it, you know, as we do the design, is it, are we able to save that? We'll, we'll talk to park staff about, yeah, what does it take to resurrect that? But, you know, if that alignment of that on-ramp changes at all, it may very well forego that fountain. But, so you know how tight everything is right in there.
Okay.
Just to mention the Emerald Ash Bore, I'm, I'm for the $50,000. I think that I had a maple, 30-year-old maple die this winter, and it's going to cost about $1,200 to remove it. So that's if you're talking about midlife ash trees that are dying. It's, you can only take out 20 trees with $25,000, and that's not treating anything. So I'm kind of for the $50,000, and it's, it's just the canopy of the city. Depends on a lot of, there's, I can't remember the count. I saw the count of the ash. It was like around a thousand.
It was 387.
Was that all? Okay. But if, like, 1% of those die, we won't have money to take them out. So I, I am for the $50,000. I kind of think that's, if it adds up over time, if it's like a savings account, basically, when we really do need it, we're going to have the money in there to really attack the Emerald Ash Bore.
Okay. We appreciate that. Anything else, Carl? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'd like to go to Kate Fuller now. Kate?
So I know we had sit in that $20,000 traffic calming for East Dartmouth Avenue, but I think that we had pulled that out of the $300,000, right? Or was there a $320,000 figure? So can we remove that $20,000, or is it $320,000, I guess is my question?
It is $320,000.
Okay. Makes sense.
Okay. Anything else, Kate?
That's all?
Okay. Michelle, I saw your hand next.
Yeah, I, I would like the, well, I have one general overall budget question. If money isn't spent that we decide in the capital budget, if it's not spent in the year that we're designating, what happens to that money? Does it go forward, or what happens?
This is Maria. Yes, it does go forward. It's unlike the general fund that goes into unassigned balance. This does go forward.
Okay. And I guess what I would just highlight, what I think Carl was getting to, is that the Emerald Ash Bore, I don't think we can, like, wait until it's the time. I think you guys need to start on the program. And generally, the injections last for two years, and you should start on that, if not this year, in 2021, definitely. That's all.
Okay. Any other comments? Diane, did I see your hand go up? No? Okay, Daryl?
I did. I, I did. I just, I, I guess I'd just like to say I'm thrilled that we get to add these extra elements to the, to the budget for this year.
Okay. Appreciate that. Daryl?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say I'm also thrilled that the City Council is taking, you know, seems to be taking our input a little bit more into account than has been the past and previous years, and that's, you know, a good result of, you know, all the hard work and processes got into it. I just, just wanted to put a, you know, a positive acclamation for everybody and all the work that's been put towards it.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Noel, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I wanted to say that, admit actually, that I also live near Dartmouth, but I don't have an opinion on calming the traffic at that section, but I'm keen to see what the survey says around that. I think the fiber network is a great add in there. From the questions last time, it looks, like it has an ROI of three or four years. It's great to see something going into the budget that will then pay off down the road. One thing I would like to try and fit in here somehow, it was a, a request for, you know, one year out, not for, for this, but it was a tier one for doing the broadband survey. And based on, you know, especially in the last couple of months, the importance we've seen for broadband, you know, people attending, attending school online, a library I work with at work is trying to figure out how to put Wi-Fi in their parking lot so that students can drive up and perform their work. It's like that would be money well spent if we could find some way to fit it in here.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any other comments from commissioners? Anything at all? Carl?
The security camera video server, I think that would be a good thing to do, that the cameras, the, we're kind of lacking in Inglewood on the security cameras, in my opinion. It's, seems like that would be a good thing to do. The Emerald Ash Bore, I already mentioned that. I'd like to see that go to $50,000. And the Dartmouth Bridge, I think that's a really kind of a mess down there, and that would be a good thing to, to do there. You have a lot of traffic going down the, the river, the road on the river there. When they cross Dartmouth, it's potholes everywhere. It just needs to be redone.
Appreciate the input. Anything else, anybody else? Judy, you've been quiet all meeting. I'll pick on you.
Okay, there we go. Apologies for being late. My, my cat, I didn't get my little notification. My husband's like, aren't you supposed to be in the meeting? Anyways, I, I do appreciate what Noel had to say about broadband. I mean, I'm thrilled that the council basically listened to everything we said. That was very, very encouraging. I heard from somebody else, too, that they, unrelated, not in our group nor on the council, that follow, listens to, listens to all the council study sessions and meetings, who said that he was glad to see that planning and zoning was actually involved in capital discussions. So this, citizens are paying attention to that. We actually did a much better process this year, and I think that council appreciated it, and so does the citizens as long, as well as us. I don't know how much the broadband was, and I'm not sure what would be taken out in order to get that in, and I don't know if we want to discuss that, but I'd be open to considering that as well. But other than that, I was just thrilled to see that it's the way, basically what we talked about, and they listened. So other than that, I'm good. And, and I heard the presentation that you guys listened to. I heard it this morning at the, our chamber board meeting. So I did know about everything that was spoken about, about the DDA.
Good. Certainly appreciate that. Any other comments from anybody?
Well, I would just go, I'm sorry, I just interrupted Carl. I'm, I agree with Judy that this was really great to have them listen to us, but I also have, want to make sure that we shout out to staff who prepared a very thorough way for us to analyze all of this information.
Appreciate that. Carl?
The broadband, I kind of didn't, I didn't really listen to the whole meeting on the council meeting, but they were talking about that. It sounded like it wasn't really adaptable to do that right away. It may be in 10 years or something, but I'm not sure what, what, what was going on with that. I just wanted to bring that up. There was an issue with it, though.
Certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments? I'd just like to add, add a little bit here, if I may. First of all, I think everybody's done great work in order to come up with what seems to be a very good budget. We don't always get what we want. For example, East Dartmouth, I'm thrilled. Not everybody is. I'm pleased that we could get in the work, workstation, the IT and other items, Noel, but you can't always get what you want. You try sometimes, and I'll bet you we'll see it next year. All right? We do know that we have in this particular budget, as, as outlined, and took feedback from the council regarding that, we're able to take care of public safety needs, take care of public infrastructure needs, take care of park needs, look proactively, hopefully proactively, at saving our urban forest, added in public art. We've got a walk-in wheel, which is part of our, and all these things are all part of our comprehensive plan. And so when I look at this, I figure, you know, we're probably going to see a lot of these things that we didn't see get in this year. We're going to see them next year. And so Noel, I'd say welcome to the team, and you'll be, you'll be here for a few other things. And Michelle, you know, Dartmouth, the times are changing. But it would seem to me that we have, just based on looking at everybody, it looks like a glorified Hollywood Squares. It would seem to me that we have a reasonable and rational consensus that we can move forward. And with that, do we have a particular vote, or do we just give a yay, or, or we don't like it? I mean, is that?
Michael, I, I would just like to respond, yes, the times are changing. I'd rather see that $300,000 go into something like traffic signals, but hey, I lost the battle. I'm good.
All right. So it seems like we all seem to be okay, and Noel, you seem to be smiling, and I appreciate that more than what you know. And I appreciate the, the perspective, and frankly, you bring something new to the Planning and Zoning Commission with, with your IT background. So really appreciate that. So with that, Chair, we entertain a motion to approve this as recommended by the City Council and based on our conversation.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, final comments before we vote? Please call the roll.
Ms. Austin? Yes. Mr. Adams? Carl, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Diane?
Yeah.
Kate Fuller?
Yeah.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
And Chair Freymeyer?
Yes. Yes. Before I go on to the next item, thank you, by the way, and I believe we've got a great, a great compromise, which makes a lot of sense going forward. And again, in an effort to work effectively, efficiently and in the best possible manner, I think we've all done yeoman's work relative to working well with the council and serving our community well. Daryl, I do see your hand is up. Did you want, did you have a comment before we move on?
Yeah, that, that hand has been up, but you know, I need to figure out how to wave it around, but I haven't figured that out yet. No, I just, my comment was just, I just wondered, it was previous to what you're talking about. I didn't know if you wanted to talk more about the broadband, given how we all learned of the importance of that in new ways in the last few weeks. But obviously I had no problem with it going forward. So that was my only comment.
Certainly appreciate that. And perhaps staff could give us a briefing on more in-depth so that we could be of better service to the community and the council relative to that and have a more educated position moving forward in the future. So that would be helpful. So if you could make a note of that, Wade, thank you very much. All right. Item number seven, staff's choice.
I do not have any updates this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Any other staff? Mr. Lewis?
I just want to echo some of the comments that have been made that, and, and just my own observation, that I've never seen a council take so almost word for word, the recommendations of a board or commission. So I think that really speaks to the process that you went through, taking two meetings to dig into this and the fact that, you know, council members actually watched your meeting and heard your deliberations and I think really felt like those, those were thoughtful. So just wanted to appreciate your time and effort on this and congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you. Certainly appreciate it. We still have other staff on, on the line. Did anybody else want to comment?
I have nothing for tonight.
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Brad. All right, let's move on to the next one. Dugan, welcome to the meeting, bud.
Well, I've been here for a while. I figured it out. Even a blind squirrel gets a nut once in a while. I have nothing to add.
Excellent. A notable comment. Doodly noted. All right, next, let's just go around the horn as I see them on my screen. Michelle?
Nothing else from me. Thank you.
Kate Fuller?
Nothing for me tonight.
Judy?
Nothing for me.
Kate Downly?
I got a couple things. I wanted to say I did participate in the webinar with Jim Hyde on small-scale development and it was really great and they had some great examples from around the country and some, some good things for Inglewood to learn from. So thank you for that opportunity. I was just wondering if there's any updates on the Kmart site and any movement there?
Wade, they, they have been working on securing and getting their easements in place for the water line. So they've been working through the process, even though it's taken quite some time since they got their approvals. So hopefully, you know, I don't know what their outlook is right now with the current state of how everything's going in, in terms of construction and whatnot. But the project definitely has not gone away. It's just taking them a while to get, get their final Ts crossed and Is dotted in order to get the construction underway.
Okay, thank you. The other, I was just going to say, too, I noticed that there is a sign up that RV parking will now be going in, in the site between the climbing gym or, and the other storage area where we had that proposal at one time for, for multifamily, so.
That is correct.
Okay.
Hopefully it won't be a permanent thing, but for the interim at least, yes, that is planned for RV parking.
Um, yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're going to go around the horn here a little bit more. And Judy, I do see your hand up. I'll get back to you. Daryl?
Yeah, along the lines, I was just curious if anything had happened, you know, in terms of the city center site, in terms of new opportunities or interests, or is just pretty much everything kind of on pause right now?
Good evening, everybody. I hope my internet connection stays because it's been very spotty today. Actually, nothing has been paused on city center site. We are continuing to work with our development partner, SKB, to move forward. And the city council will actually be taking the second of three steps in terms of major agreements. On June 1st, we're going to be doing a pre-development agreement presentation to the city council that evening. We meet weekly with SKB and we did so for almost three hours today. So we are trending forward. It's very difficult to say in terms of the exact timing when things will happen. Obviously, certain segments of the, the real estate economy are more impacted than others, particularly on things like hotel and retail. But we're, our eyes are open, but we're still planning to go ahead and get as far down the road as we can by the end of this year, very beginning of next year, with an actual master development agreement with SKB so that the property can be repositioned for its, its actual redevelopment. So no, things are very much in process.
Good. Daryl, anything else?
Yeah, I just, I, I think that's encouraging, encouraging to hear. I didn't know if, you know, if you present any new opportunities, but good to hear that things are moving forward. You know, I look forward to hearing more as things progress.
Thank you. Noel?
I would like to say that as my first, first go around in the budget with no, you know, previous experience on, on past years, that I very much appreciated the, the process. And as a famous person once said, you miss 100% of the budget items you don't ask for. So I look forward to next year speaking up on the broadband, the broadband survey.
Excellent. Appreciate that. Carl? Hold on, Carl. Pardon me? Please, please start over, sir.
Okay.
We didn't get you unmuted in time.
The, as far as the Kmart goes, they got signs up for, that are leasing spaces and it's kind of odd that they're, have the signs up before they've done any redevelopment there. But I would assume that they're working with anybody that wants to do a lease and telling them, you know, what they're going to be leasing when it's all remodeled. Hopefully it will get changed around to what they say they're going to build. There, there are, they seem to be pretty slow on that, but anything of that size is going to be slow. And I just, basically stay safe with the virus. So that's something new and it's going to affect us for many, many years. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Diane?
I, I don't have anything to add other than to echo Noel's comments about this first go around.
Certainly appreciate that. Thank you. I think I've gotten to everybody, even though when people are in and out, the screen moves. So it's like Hollywood Squares. It's great. I just have just a couple of closing comments. First of all, thank you, everyone. These last number of months trying to run these meetings has been, been interesting. And so I think everybody's been very patient with one another, with everybody's internet connections and, and all that and audio changing and in and out. So thank you for that. Thank you for staff for arranging this and putting this on a format that makes sense. I really am hopeful that, that next month we can meet in person, even if we have to be spread out. That's certainly up to others to decide. I'm just telling you my personal hope. I think there's a huge lesson, I'm going to switch gears for just a moment. There's a huge lesson to where now we're having RV parking, where we did have the opportunity to have a 300-person or 300-unit building with internal parking and people that park along a public right-of-way didn't like the fact that other people could also be in competition to park on their public right-of-way that they consider to be their own. Now let's, let's think about that. We've got 10 people potentially and I think six business owners, of which two came forward and that was a groundswell of support for stopping a multimillion-dollar operation, or multimillion-dollar building, which would put people in Inglewood to pay taxes, in sales tax to help the city, and it was voted down. Now, this is, this is yesterday's news about that voting it down. It was not this city council. It was the previous city council, but there's a huge lesson to be learned here. If there's a property owner who says, we have a use which could be kind of a gritty industrial use, but we would like to do a residential use, which is a much less intense and those specifically for the next 40 or 50 years, presumably that building would stand, people would live in it and they would be bringing their money into Inglewood, Colorado. Instead, we're going to take somebody else's RV, shove it onto an industrial lot, get no sales tax, and when they hook up to their trailer or the husband, wife, partner, whatever the deal is, drops off the other person to pick up the RV, they don't stop here to spend a dime unless they're going to go get some gas on their way out of town. And I think the message is, we as a commission and we as a city need to understand that the groundswell of one for competition over who gets to park on a public right-of-way that we all presumably could park on regardless is ridiculous. It is ridiculous. And if they didn't like it, what they should have done is purchased the property. And that way they could develop it into a great big parking lot so they could park their three cars on it that they parked on the public right-of-way today. That'd be the street. That's just me. That's the message I think I wanted to send and I don't know how else to put it, but I don't think we're going to look at RVs for a month. These people are paying 100 to $500 a month, every month. And for that, all they need to do is fill in a pothole every now and then so that they don't have a liability issue. We're going to live with that sucker and if you didn't like the other building, you're certainly not going to like this thing. And the previous council voted for it. There's a group that, that says, we don't want to see Inglewood change and they're right. And so all that industrial property that could have been a more intensive residential is still much less intensive use than what it's going to be today and for the foreseeable future. And I think there's a tremendous lesson to be learned there and I think we need to understand that. And that doesn't mean just because it's changed, it's good. They all deserve scrutiny, but I do believe that, that this is a problem and we're not going to like it for a long time. So keep that in mind when somebody wants to come forward with a less intensive use and three people in the community don't like it. This, this is what we get. So now the community doesn't have to like it for a long time. So 35 or 33,000 people don't like what's going to happen, I can assure you. And we're not going to get the revenue that we could have gotten because we just voted no. You know, we voted yes, the council voted no, the previous council. There's a huge lesson here. Somebody should review this tape, bring back the recording and play it for the last five minutes. I'll get off my soapbox. I wish everybody a great week and hopefully we can meet all in June together. And, and as Carl said, please be safe, be cognizant of what you do and enjoy the last part of spring and the first part of summer. We'll talk to you real soon. Thanks.